I'd like to call to order this school board meeting of Independent School District 624. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Belloid?
Here.
Daniels? Newmaster?
Here.
Strife Oji?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Arcand?
Absent.
Oh, and me too.
Oh, you're another.
Ellison?
Here. All right, if I could, we could all please remove your hats and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have before us an agenda. We're going to get a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Newmaster and a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Belloid. Any discussion? All right, this will be a voice vote. All in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. And the agenda passes. Next, we have before us a consent agenda. Consent agenda is of various sundry items like minutes and invoices, field trips, et cetera, and as always, it includes our donations from our community, and we are grateful for the generosity of our community in contributing to our students' experiences. So can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Belloid and a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Strife Oji. Any discussion? This will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Belloid?
Aye.
Daniels? Newmaster?
Aye.
Strife Oji?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye. And the consent agenda passes. The next part of our meeting is public forum. There were two requests to speak. I'm just going to read a couple of the regulations for the public forum, and then we'll move into the speakers. Public forum allows for three minutes per speaker. With one minute remaining, a yellow card will be held up, or an orange card will be held up by Ms. Belloid. At 30 seconds, there will be a yellow card held up. And at three minutes, the red card will be held up, indicating that it is time to stop. At the end of three minutes, the gavel will be tapped. Speakers will be called to the microphone and recognized one at a time. Only those individuals who have been recognized will be allowed to speak. School district policy and data privacy laws preclude personnel and student matters or data from being discussed publicly. C1, Student Recognition. Dr. Kazmercheck.
All right, thank you Chair Ellison, members of the board. Tonight, we celebrate White Bear Lake area school students for state and national level honors in Minnesota Scholastic Art Awards, boys' swimming and diving, boys' alpine skiing, cheerleading, and girls' gymnastics. Well done, students, and thank you to the staff and family members who supported the students along the way. Go Bears and roll the video.
Excited for the day when we can have our students back in the room, so we can see their faces and applaud for them. All right, thank you, Dr. Kazmercheck, and we'll move on to informational item C2, Superintendent's Report.
All right, thank you Chair Ellison, members of the board. I'll turn it over to our liaison, student liaison, Bemna Testima, to give the student report first.
Girls' basketball state tournament starts this Wednesday at noon, and seniors, please get your submissions in for what you want your senior T-shirts and yard sign to look like.
Sweet. Okay, so before I begin my update, I'd like to say a quick welcome back from spring break. I hope everybody had a safe and fun week, and that our students took Bears advice and mastered a new task of their choice during their time away from school. March has been a month of early recognition days, with many celebrations having already passed. Those that remain include the national month-long recognitions of nutrition, music in our schools, women's history, and social work. Additionally, tomorrow is National Social, excuse me, National Social Workers' Day. And to follow up, girls' basketball at state, so our team will play in the state tournament. For a quarterfinal game versus Rosemount at noon on Wednesday, March 16th, at Williams Arena on the University of Minnesota campus. Find a link to purchase tickets as a news item on the district website, www.isd624.org. We are eager to welcome our class of 2035. I always feel really old when we do this announcement each year. We are eager to welcome our class of 2035 incoming kindergarteners. As students are officially enrolled, they receive a welcome packet from their school, complete with an "I'm a Bear" T-shirt. Find enrollment paperwork and additional information at www.isd624.org/kindergarten. That's my report.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Dr. Kazmercheck? Right, we will move on to our discussion items. Discussion item D1, Sale of General Obligation School Building Bonds, Series 2022A. Andy Johnson, Ms. Johnson, welcome.
Thank you, good evening. At the February 14th board meeting, the school board authorized the sale of up to $63 million of general obligation bonds. It's the next installment of bonds related to the 2019 bond referendum. The bonds were sold today, and we have Shelby McQuaid here from Ellers to discuss the sale day report.
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. McQuaid.
Thank you, good evening, thanks for having me. It was a, it turned out to be a good day to sell bonds. The feds meet on Tuesday and Wednesday, and they are anticipated to raise rates. Rates came in fairly well today, so good news and lots of interest in your bonds today. So six bidders, I'll just walk through the sale day report if you have it in front of you. Six bidders bid on your bonds today. The winning bidder from Wells Fargo gave an interest rate of 2.89%. So still well under that 3% rate, and very far under where we anticipated at the vote, at the time of the vote when we had built the entire plan altogether, where we had anticipated rates increasing by this point to maybe 4%. So we'd incorporated a lot of cushions, so still well below that. The big news of the wholesale today was that you received a very large premium, which allowed an additional approximately $4 million to go into your construction fund than we'd anticipated. So, so good news there to borrow that additional at the lower interest rate, and that sort of doesn't change where that third installment will come into play. So in a couple of years, we'll still sell the remaining authority of approximately $13 million of your building bonds. And all of that is still fitting well under where you told voters at the time of the election. So you'll have funds available for the projects going forward on April 7th, that's the closing date. And then if I can just walk through some of the attachments, I'll point out some of the highlights on each. So the first two attachments on the sale day report pages one and two show the winning bidders and then the bidders who did not produce the low bid. So Wells Fargo with the low bid of 2.89, the cover bid was Citigroup. And there, they were the winning bidders on the $250 million on the first one in 2020. So not quite the winner here. JP Morgan, Baird, Piper out of Minneapolis, and then Bank of America Merrill Lynch. So lots of interest nationally for your bonds today, so good news overall on that. Where it was indicating that you'll have some additional funds available is on the sale day attachments, page three. So we authorized the issuance of $63 million. That was the borrowing amount because of the premium, and that is the amount higher than the face value of the bonds that the investors paid, or the endor rider paid. You'll see an additional approximately $4 million into the construction fund. The debt schedule is on the next page, and then your overall, the long-term plan is on those next two pages, where you can see, you know, all the details there on page five, but then the image on page six, where you can see it all fitting together. You can see that we maintained that increase from taxes payable in 2019 to 2020, with the voters approved. There was a slightly higher bar there in 2021, and that was some additional pay-as-you-go and additional levy to correspond with other decreases throughout the overall school district levy, and then right back down to where it was indicated to voters. The next attachment there is the rating report from S&amp;P. So S&amp;P affirmed your AA negative rating on your district, and you have a negative outlook assigned to that. They held that, they affirmed the rating and held the outlook. They were pleasantly surprised with the stronger-than-anticipated surplus for FY21. And then Andy and Dr. Kazmercheck talked them through the strategy that's in place going forward to keep the fund balance above the policy level that the board set. So all that in place there, they held on to your rating at the AA negative and didn't make any changes there. So that was good news there. The last page then, if you kind of flip all the way through the rating report, is the interest rates overall. So, you know, just kind of giving the trend from where you were at when you did the vote, and you can see in 2019, and then when you sold the initial set of bonds, this average BBI was about 2.5 on average when the initial bonds were sold, and then that's about where we're ending up right now with this. So lots of volatility in the market, but really good rates overall. Historically, very low interest rates and about the same as where we were a couple of years ago. So good news there. We'd anticipated the increase, and it just didn't come into fruition compared to where we were before. So good news overall, and happy to answer any questions. You have an action item that is the resolution to award the sale to Wells Fargo.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. McQuaid? Thank you so much. We will move on to discussion item D2, Fiscal Year 2022-23 Proposed Budget Adjustments. Is this Matt Mons and Andy Johnson?
Yes, it is.
Oh, one question.
I'm sorry, I actually have a question. I think you could probably answer that. That 3% demarcation line for the rate, where's that coming from? We're trying to say, how is that set? I'm trying to remember. The obligation bonds.
On the graph, on this graphic?
Yeah.
Shelby, question about the graphic with the rate, the rate, the historical rate with the line?
The 3% demarcation line, I'm just wondering.
Oh, that would be the?
Five-year average. 3.04.
That's, okay. Okay.
Yeah.
I got it now.
Five-year average of AAA bonds. So you're a AAA, you're in, you have the state credit enhancement rating, which the state is rated a AAA. So if the state goes to sell bonds, that's what we could anticipate that they're rating. So for every rating notch below, there might be some variation in that. So you are rated a AA minus, which is three notches below the AAA. So a good rating overall, but that AAA is kind of the gold standard.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Ms. McQuaid. Oh, it's okay. Ms. Johnson and Mr. Mons.
Okay, good evening. We've had lots of discussion about budget in the last several meetings, and so we're not going to go into the great depth that we have. We think we've really done a good job with that. But this evening, we're bringing forward the proposed budget adjustments that we have for next school year. So to start out, I'm just going to talk about what the budget adjustments or guiding principles have been as we've been compiling the budget adjustments for next school year. The number one priority is to minimize the impact on the classroom. And as we said at our board meeting two weeks ago, I think we've done a very good job of that in the last couple of years of budget reductions. We had that graph of where the prior reductions have been, and the amount that we've experienced at the elementary and secondary level has been not as drastic, but we've kind of exhausted those kind of accounting shifts or the easier reductions. We're going to be seeing more of those proposed this evening. We maintain our commitment to the equity commitment, and that's been at the forefront of all of our discussions as we've been compiling these. We are making sure that our adjustments are sustainable for multiple years. One-year shifts are helpful when it comes to just building a fund balance, but right now, we're looking at structural imbalance. So we need to make sure that our revenues are equal to our expenditures, and so any reductions need to be sustainable for at least a couple of years. Attrition, so that's the cost savings that we might have between a retirement or resignation and a new hire. That will play into some of the staffing reductions that we're experiencing. Staff across this district have been encouraged to share any ideas that they've had. We've had budget meetings at all of our sites, and we've encouraged individuals to reach out if they have any thoughts or questions, and we've heard from some, and that's been helpful. And our target for next school year is to have adjustments of the amount of about $3.8 million. So what are the adjustments that we're bringing forward this evening? These are not necessarily prioritized, I want to point that out. The line number is just so it's easier for us to talk about them. The first item is related to community education. So we're going to increase the chargeback that we do to that fund, related to general fund expenses such as custodial, human resources, and finance office support. That's going to be $65,000. The second line is related to nutrition services. So statute allows that if our nutrition services fund balance is healthy, that we're able to charge nutrition services costs related to custodial and student supervision to the nutrition services fund. So we're going to be able to have some general fund relief to the tune of about $440,000. And this is specifically, we're able to do that right now because we have very high revenue related to the free meals for all students. So this one will be sustainable for a few years. If those free meals to students go away, this may not be sustainable to this level going forward. Special ed, these are all net of our related revenue. So there's revenue that we receive on our special ed expenditures. What's reflected here is the savings after the revenue decrease. So there's 1.2 teaching FTE, 2.5 support staff FTE, and then shifting our licensed school nurses to special education. So our school nurses are going to be able to track that time that they spend working with special education students, and then we can recoup revenue on those. That's $179,000. Line number four is a restructure between our teaching and learning and special services departments, and that's $131,000 savings. In the technology department, they are looking at some supply and equipment budget reductions that will save $150,000. Line number six is shifting staff from the general fund unassigned to general fund restricted sources, and then also to some, to the bond projects for project management, and that amounts to $465,000. Line seven is reducing district center supply and contracted services budgets. That's $95,000. Line eight is at the elementary, so this is reducing eight teaching FTE, and this really just matches our pre-COVID class size targets. And then also to reduce our distance learning academy principal position, and that saves $696,000. Line number nine is at the secondary level, and this reduces 16 teaching positions, and then 3.5 general education support staff FTEs, and that is $1,113,000. Line number 10 is secondary revenue increase, so increasing our athletic fees. That brings in about $40,000 of additional revenue. And then number 11, teaching and learning, restructuring the calendar for our instructional coaches, and then also some supply software budget reduction that saves $144,000. And then line number 12 is related to transportation. If we increase our walking radius by one mile at the elementary level, and then two miles at the secondary level, that reduces three bus routes, and would save $195,000. And so that puts us at a total of 3.7 million. And as you saw in the previous slide, we were shooting for a target of 3.8. We went through these with our executive finance committee before spring break, and after some discussion there and further discussion with our principals, there was one item that we were thinking about bringing forward that we weren't comfortable on going forward with anymore. So what we've brought forward now is 3.7. We feel fairly confident that we might receive some federal or some state relief with the budget being at the state level what it is, and that would help get us to that $3.8 million. So I threw a lot of numbers at you. What questions might you have for us?
Any questions for Ms. Johnson or Mr. Mons? Ms. Strife Oji?
So when you say it would, the elementary FTEs, that it would go to pre-COVID class sizes, does that mean there are eight additional teachers?
Correct. And so what we've been doing on an annual basis has been trying to reset back to our 2018-19 class size averages, before the world changed a fair amount there. And we had set those to based on previous class size averages. So our goal has been to maintain that, and we've done that, and then and more. So with some of the additional services, the DLA, for instance, and some of our, you know, other things that came up throughout this year, yeah, we've wound up in a place where we're about eight staff too heavy there in order to go back to that class size average. The other thing that I'd point out there is just that we're also seeing a large class moving out of the elementary, and so, you know, this tracks, a good portion of this doesn't mean that we've had eight additional FTE this year, but it also means that, you know, they're seeing a reduction in enrollment at the elementary level as well. And then I can create a little bit more context, too, at the secondary level for what this means here. So again, we always look at first, so what would it take to maintain our class size averages based on where we've been? So we went through that process first, tracked student migration, and then looked at it, and then we looked at, so what would need to happen if we were to see some budget reductions in this area? We also took a look at some of our historical trends in terms of where we've seen additional FTE placements over time, and we've seen our FTE increasing at the secondary level relative to our student population for actually quite a while, where we have one of the lowest class size averages in the metro in our secondary programming. And so we've been looking at that fairly hard here as a place where we could make some changes. And, you know, one thing that I'd point out, too, when you're talking about secondary class sizes, there's ongoing conversations that always need to happen, too, in terms of how do those show up? So what I mean by that is there might be students right now that, for instance, would be in a class of 34. Well, those are often decisions that we're making because we're also trying to run a class of 17 somewhere. So, you know, this doesn't mean that we would see enormous class size changes throughout all of the classes or the student experience there, but we're going to have to look pretty carefully at some of those courses that we've been running with significantly lower enrollment, for instance. So it's not, you know, a consistent increase across every class there. With the recommendation that we have on the table right now, this would still move us that we'd be well under the average for the metro in terms of our secondary class sizes.
That's very helpful, thank you.
Dr. Newmaster?
I have one question, is you're balancing secondary, and having been a secondary teacher in an elective, that's always a nervous place in the spring. And what I'm wondering is if you still are looking at balancing class size within a department, because band might be 70, but lessons are smaller groups. Why ed has a large number, but they may have some special mixed blend class that's smaller, but important? So do you also look at that as a factor?
Yes, absolutely. So we're looking at all of those, and then we look at, you know, there's just factors that you need to run a successful program in some of those areas, too. You know, whether it's special education, whether it's general education, music, for instance, I mean, some of those programs just need to look different. And so, you know, we're really looking at that. This won't be the first time, this won't be the first year here that we've looked to try to make sure that in those core curricular areas, we're not seeing class sizes rise so high. So we've been paying attention to kind of our minimum class sizes within elective areas for a while there, and trying to be really strategic as well in terms of, you know, how do we grow those and making sure that they're sustainable programs?
Ms. Belloid?
So I know some of the smaller class sizes comes into play with the CIS classes. How does that work in terms of the budget? And I don't know, I mean, it's college in the school, so it's run through Minnesota. How does that, how does it work?
That's not been problematic as we've been looking at this, because college in the schools has come up, you know, as we've looked at staffing issues over the last really three years, because even though we haven't necessarily been making the same kind of budget reductions, we end up going through these same conversations every single year because students are making different choices, and we're seeing our student population shift, too. And so we're constantly having this conversation about, you know, what are we going to be able to run? And so we've not really seen that we've been inhibited by the class size ceilings at the, in the CIS classes, because that's what you're referring to, the third-party ceilings that are put there. Those generally track within the range that we offer in our courses. So what I'm saying is the ceilings are still well above our bottom threshold, our minimum threshold.
I know the CIS language classes at the, I guess it would be like a 101, 102 level language classes tend to be fairly small, because you're talking about kids that are, this is now their fourth and fifth years of a language. So I'm just wondering, if you've got a class of seven, is that still going to be a continuation of that, or is that something that's going to?
So looking at some of those specific tracks, I can't necessarily speak to each of them individually, but, you know, we have looked at that, and we've already known there are going to be some offerings that we're probably not going to be continuing just due to a lack of interest. We also saw that on the front end, there wasn't enough interest to sustain some of those offerings at the middle school level, too. So some of those, it's been more about student choice than anything else, you know, kind of seeing those transition.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Thompson?
I just get an example of a smaller class that, when you're talking about being able to remove those, what is an example of one that we would consider getting rid of?
I don't think it's about getting rid of any kind of a particular course. What we've been talking about is making sure that, you know, we've kind of been using, we want to believe that we're going to be attracting 20 students to most of our classes, you know, so that's what we've been looking at. We have that as kind of a parameter as we were moving through staffing the last two years. We've also said sometimes we're trying to move forward a program, though, and they're not all going to start in the same place. So we've kind of put the tag on some of our programming, too, that we're really trying to bolster and, you know, and start. And so we understand that we may have some pockets where we'll be running differently, but we're careful about making sure that we're, you know, we're having that discussion and that we're talking with the department, with teachers, about where we need to grow that program, too, in order to make it sustainable. So we do have some courses, you know, so we take a nuanced view of it. So we do have some courses, you know, so we take a nuanced view of it. You know, without looking right now at student registration for 2022, '23, I really couldn't tell you which, you know, which particular courses that could be. And sometimes it's just talking about whether you're going to have three or four sections of a course as well.
Oh, and don't we currently have a one-mile walking radius for our elementaries? Didn't we do that for this school year?
We made a change last year during.
One mile. So that's just staying the same? Or is this?
No, and this year, and this year it's back to half mile.
Oh, okay. So this would just be bringing?
This would be bringing it to a mile.
I want to say, make sure, Ms. Daniels, do you have any questions?
Just one, you know, I mentioned that our talk, and I was wondering, what the metro aggregate class size is and what it part of the?
At the secondary there? Yeah, so at the secondary, let's see, make sure ours is right around 24.3 and that average is 27.5.
Okay.
Yep. And, you know, so that's what that looks like. I'm always a little wary of tossing those numbers out there like that because this is in the aggregate. So this takes into account all of those things that we're talking about, like music courses, you know, and just some of those. It's like, so the average student probably doesn't feel like their average class size is 23, but that is the actual ratio for classroom teachers there.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have a couple of questions. One, talking about transportation, so we were a mile and we shifted to a half a mile, right, for elementary. What are we at currently for secondary?
I believe we're at one mile.
We're at one mile secondary.
One mile. So that's.
Sure, we shifted, we shifted elementary and secondary. I don't remember them exactly. It was off the top of my head. I think it was one mile elementary and I think it was two for secondary. Even one and a half. I'm not 100% certain.
Yes.
Anyway, and part of that was designed to reduce load during the first of our two quarters of years.
Okay. Yeah, that just brings up some concerns for me, you know, thinking as a parent about, you know, a high schooler walking 45 minutes to school. And I know in conversations with Ms. Johnson and Mr. Wald that there is a, what did you call it, Ms. Johnson, like a hazard law?
Mm-hmm.
So that that is taken into consideration with the radius, that students will not have to cross hazardous crossings like Century, for example, where there's no sidewalks, which is a good thing. But it just, when I think about kids walking two miles to school in January, that feels like a concern for me. And I know that you've talked about this and you've discussed this at length, but I'm wondering, how different would it look? And maybe this is just, you know, a question for you, Ms. Johnson and Mr. Wald, if we stayed at 1.5? If we kept elementary, because again, elementary, I'm thinking about first graders, you know, walking to school a mile and it's not ideal. And I'm just concerned about the safety of it. I don't know that I have a specific question about it, but that's the one that strikes me as worrisome.
So if you, if we shifted to 1.5 at secondary, we would just have to rerun, we'd have to just rerun and see what capacity we could buy.
Okay.
We'd have to just see what the result would be. For the one mile, the shift to one mile last year, again, I can't say that we necessarily saw a huge increase in the number of walkers.
Okay.
I think what's being discussed, you know, the mile elementary and two-mile secondary is not unusual. Same, it's probably more unusual than a half mile, as you said, elementary, just all the context. Totally understand what you're saying. And the issue of hazardous crossings, we designate those, as you said. And so like, we're not, you know, we're not having elementary kids walk across Ivy 61, regardless of the distance to school. So, well, depending, you know, depending on stoplights and all that, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I guess I would be interested to see what those numbers might look like. I know Mike Trido does a really great job in transportation, looking at all the routes.
Yeah, and I know, and we've had conversations about this in executive finance and I, you know, so we're at 3.7 million. You know, that is one that, you know, if we're not quite ready to make a decision on that in the next two weeks, that is one that, you know, maybe that, maybe we don't get to our 3.8 or 3.7. Maybe we, maybe we stop at 3.5. Maybe that, we study that a little further and that becomes something we can talk about a year from now when we're in that round. We talked about that, knowing that we, you know, if we land at 3.5 right now or between now and March 28th, we come up with some other ideas about some other things that perhaps we thought of. But if we land at 3.5, we just know that next year's amount will be greater than what was projected to be. That would also allow time for this legislative session to play out.
Yeah.
What might happen there?
That was my next question.
I don't think we can count on anything right now. However, you know, it's okay to maybe hope once in a while. So with the surplus we, the state does have, perhaps there would be some additional revenue that we haven't counted on. We haven't counted on any new idea that's been proposed. I know the governor's proposed 2% on the formula. For us, that would be about 1.3 million in additional revenue next year. And even if they end up halfway there, that helps us quite a bit. So this might be one of those that maybe we, you know, we study it further and bring it back. Future data is one of the, you know, next year will be needing down to a point where budget reductions are not easy. They're difficult and there is, you feel like when we go through this, that's one that, you know, half a year. I think that could be an approach. I just want to throw that out as an approach you want to take with that. Just understand then, we're not, we're not going to be at our 3.0.
Yes. Yep, and I understand that. And we, we've looked at this budget with the understanding that we can't count on any additional funding from the state, which is where most of our funding comes from. But knowing that that might change, would change that. So what I see on the next slide, then, is that the next steps, and so it looks like for the next work session, we'll approve these budget adjustments as a board, but then we will continue to talk about this throughout the spring as we get new information.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, but we're, I mean, there is some time sensitivity to make, we need to make a decision on what we're comfortable moving ahead with. And I would suggest that, you know, what Andy and I have gone through is many, 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 many hours of planning and talking. So, you know, again, only two budget adjustments, budget reductions are not, it's not an easy time, but these are pretty well-headed ideas. Transportation idea, you know, I get the hesitation. I'll tell you that, you know, we, when we did it last year, it seemed to work pretty well. I know there were some who were upset, of course, in intending to make that change. There was a little bit different circumstance. But yeah, we certainly can study it further.
Ms. Thompson.
So then that makes me, you know, just thinking about how cold it was this winter and it wasn't as cold as it has been, you know, that, that is a, you know, that could cause students to not come to school because it's too cold to walk. Do we, they don't, if, say a student didn't come to school because they had to walk the two miles and it was negative, you know, 20 outside, they wouldn't get, you know, if, what if there's a week where it's, you know, consistently cold like that the whole week and the student just can't get to school, that wouldn't be, you know, they wouldn't get in trouble for being tardy or missing those, like, how do we handle that portion of it? And do we know how?
Well, we would expect students to be at school regardless of the walking distance. I mean, that we would, we would bypass a week or two at a.
No, but I mean, like, we have one winter where it was extremely cold. If a student has to walk 45 minutes to school and it's, that's too long. That's frostbite, that's medical, you know, things could happen and then.
But there's like that, what's the district's obligation and what's a parent's obligation, too? And I know the state statute requires anyone who lives two miles or more than two miles from school to have access to transportation. So that's statute, K through 12. There's no difference, there's no different figure.
We have families that are unable to provide.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, like, you know, there's.
We have to take that into consideration because this could affect our students that are already marginalized and I wouldn't want to make, I would want to make sure that they weren't punished because their family didn't have a way to get them to, or their family had to go to work because they needed to earn a living and they can't drive their kid, they can't, they're not able or privileged to be able to say, well, I'm going to go to work late today so I can get my kid to school and then I'll come and, they can't do that.
I could hop in there for a moment. What I would just say is regardless of this, because I've become aware of some of these situations, you know, with families in my role and our, you know, our staff at our sites do a really excellent job of working. So, you know, there's lots of factors and this could be one of them, but we take lots of factors into account when we're trying to understand, you know, why somebody might be tardy, why, you know, what that looks like, why a truancy might happen. And so, you know, we look for patterns, we don't look to punish on particular days. And trying to understand the challenges that each family is faced with, regardless of how those challenges arose, you know, that's work that just happens on a daily basis in all of our schools.
Dr. Neumaster.
I'm going to express similar things to what Angela was speaking about because I also think with the two mile, and we're talking sixth graders and up, walking two miles in whatever the weather is. I think a lot of parents, yes, they can be late to work, they can change their schedule, but many parents can't. And I think that's another thing that is discriminatory if you're marginalized, you're a single parent and you don't have a flexible schedule. So I'm just thinking, two miles is a long way. My kids were walkers. They walked from the daycare to Lincoln and they had to walk. And they actually had shoveled sidewalks. A lot of places don't have shoveled sidewalks. You look at it and there is a sidewalk, but we live off 120 and it's usually not passable for two, three days after a snowball. And then the city sends something through to plow it sort of. So a sidewalk doesn't always mean it's passable and the kids stand in the road and walk in the road. So, and I think it's dark when the little kids are going for part of the winter. That's just another issue. But I do think two miles is a really long way. And the other question and variable, and you've got 10,000 variables to juggle, it's a terrible job. But the other, the other thing is everything has changed with working patterns in the last two years. A lot of people have been home. That affected how many kids were on the bus, probably two. How they felt about COVID, somebody was home to drop them off. If people are back at work downtown or in Minneapolis, that may change. So I'm just thinking, I don't want your job because it's definitely complex, but put a heavy thumb on there for kids that are marginalized or challenged, who are the latchkey kids? Some of them are your teachers' kids. Mine were.
So I guess at this point, moving forward, what might be helpful is to take a look at how we might be able to give that, that particular item another look and then.
Happy to do that.
Perfect. And then we will just do that and then we'll just move forward from there.
Yep, sounds good.
Okay. Excellent. Oh, yes, Ms. Tasma.
This is about the athletic fees. So does that, like, extra $15 that I put towards my registration for soccer or something, does it go towards like my team's jerseys or where does that go? Yes, that's what that is. Oh, okay. Yep, and what we looked at with the athletic fees is we looked at our conference and where all of our peers have been at with their athletic fees. And this puts us just below the conference average for our fees. We haven't increased our fees for quite some time, but that extra fee that you're talking about is over and above, it's a separate fee. Yep. Okay.
I guess the only addition I'd probably make to that, too, is that it's not for the core uniform that somebody would wear like to a game, for instance. It's for the practice uniforms, those pieces.
Thank you very much.
All right, next steps? Do, did we talk next steps?
Jessica touched on it. So we've kind of been through all of our meetings, we've talked about it at a lot of, at a lot of board meetings now. Our next step will be to bring forward at our next board meeting, a list of adjustments for approval by the school board.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you, Mr. Mons. All right, so we will move into discussion item D3, the first reading of school board policies. For just context, we do two readings of school board policies, the first reading and then we'll do the second reading to approve the policies. And so for this board meeting, we are, we are looking at the first reading of school board policies, 404, 405, 406, 410, 501, 507, 526, 531, 706, and 720. Does anyone have any questions or comments about any of these policies?
I have one question, Jessica.
Okay, Ms. Daniels.
Now, it was on, I don't know, questions, this question, this clarification for me on 406, under definition, page 67.
Okay, I'm getting there here.
Just quickly, I have a question.
Okay.
Um, just on that very first, where it is, uh, here's the first question. And it talks about, let me see if I can say it correctly. Under definition E, it says confidential means the data is not public and is not accessible to the subject. So the data, I, what did I should have said, public instead of subject? I know it's very small, but I didn't understand that. Does, does confidential mean that a person actually can access their own data?
Correct, in very few cases.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Right. Any other comments or questions about these policies? All right, so these policies will come back for a second reading and at which time we will approve them. So we are going to move on to our operational items. Operational item E1, action on sale of general obligation, school building bond, series 2022A, in the amount of $63 million. Ms. Johnson.
Earlier in this evening, Shelby McQuay had presented the sale day report from our 2020, 2022A bond issuance. So now I ask that the, I recommend the school board approve.
All right, you've heard the recommendation. Can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion by Ms. Thompson. A second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Neumaster. Any discussion? This will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Boyd?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Neumaster?
Aye.
Strifoggi?
Aye.
Thompson, aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you. We'll move on to operational item E2, action on purchase of City of Hugo Public Works site. Mr. Rozier.
Good evening, everyone. With the expansion of North Campus, we had to relocate our bus garage and grounds facility, which were over in the North Campus area. We initially planned on building a joint bus garage, grounds garage. And when we started planning, it became apparent that cramming everybody in and all the equipment was going to cost us a fortune to build a facility that could combine both groups. And at the same time, the City of Hugo approached us, they needed to, they needed to build a bigger public works building and they asked us if we were interested in purchasing the old public works facility. And we looked at it, it's just an awesome facility, perfect for what we needed. So we decided. Hopefully they won't want it back and we can stay there forever, but if.
And the notice would be three years, so we'd have time to.
Yep, we'd have time to, to find a new, a new spot. So we're really excited about this, it's, it's a perfect spot for our grounds crew, it's a large 24,000 square foot building, we're going to have district storage over there, we're going to have our maintenance team over there, all of our parts for the different schools that our maintenance team would need. We can store all of our grounds equipment inside, which is incredible. All that stuff's going to last longer because it's all going to be in a secure facility, it's got a wash bay, it's got a maintenance bay, welding hood, it's, it's just the perfect facility for us. So, well, we're recommending you approve the purchase of the Hugo Public Works building.
Right, any questions for Mr. Rozier? Ms. Boyd.
I'm, I'm sure the fact that we're getting it for a million dollars probably overrides this, but, so, everything would be housed way on the north end of the district, is that going to be an issue when we're working with South Campus or any of the, the other schools on the south end?
Definitely, we're going to have to trailer more things, we just didn't have anything centralized, losing, losing our spot at North Campus, we, we knew we'd have to move to Hugo. The good thing is when we take over South Campus, when South Campus becomes Sunrise Middle School, we're going to have the auto shop available too for our grounds crew and, so they're going to be able to house equipment both on the south side of town and the north side of town, so that'll help us out.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Rozier? All right, you've heard the recommended action, could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Boyd and a second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Newmaster, any further discussion? All right, this will require a roll call vote, I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Strife Oji?
Aye.
Thompson, aye.
And the motion passes, thank you. Operational item E3 is also, Mr. Rozier, action on the bid for Birch Lake Elementary Domestic Water Piping Replacement Project in the amount of $332,200. Mr. Rozier.
Yeah, this project was part of our long-term facility maintenance plan, it's in our 10-year plan that we bring to the board every summer. Birch Lake was built in 1966 and the plumbing inside the wall over there is all galvanized plumbing, the domestic water supply, and in, being 66 years old, we're getting quite a few leaks, some, a lot of corrosion in the pipes, discolored water, and it's just time to, to go after and replace all them galvanized plumbing pipes with copper lines. So we did Lincoln last summer, we're hoping to do Birch this summer, and, and just with the age of our buildings, I'm expecting in the next 10 years, we'll do quite a few other schools, just, just to keep our plumbing in good shape. So we had two bidders for this project, Craft Mechanical was the low bid at 332,200, so we're recommending approval of this project to Craft Mechanical.
You've heard the recommended action, could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Strife Oji and a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Boyd, any discussion? Ms. Boyd.
Is that, is that typical in our buildings to replace the galvanized with copper?
That's usually where you go after, once the galvanized starts giving you problems, that's usually the, where you take it, is to replace it with copper.
Do you end up having the same problem with copper later on too?
Copper's got a, a much better lifespan, so with the galvanized lasting 60, between 50 and 60 years, I'd expect copper to last even longer, so I, I wouldn't think in the next, in our lifetimes that it would have to be replaced.
So is this all of the piping within the building, or is this just certain areas of the building?
This is pretty much all the piping, there's some runs that go down walls and stuff, so we're not going to break through walls, we're really not having any problem with inside the walls, but everything in the ceilings, tunnels will be replaced with copper. So it'll still be probably 5% of the piping in the building will be galvanized, and if that starts leaking, then that's when we're going to have to break through walls and take care of that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, this will require a roll call vote, I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Strife Oji?
Aye.
Thompson, aye.
And the motion passes. Next up, operational item E4, action on bid for White Bear Lake Area High School, North Campus AV Package 27A and 27B in the amount of $1,045,802.84. Mr. Rozier.
Yes, we bid these AV packages separate from our building package, just to give us more time to, to figure out everything, and the bid package 27A, it pretty much consists of sounds, sound and video systems throughout the new building, and 27B is more of your PA systems, your bells, your voice and audio amplification throughout, throughout the building. So we had two bidders again for this project, and Advanced System Integration was the low bidder for each bid scope. Bid scope A for $447,129.86, and work scope B was for $598,672.98. It's a combined bid of $1,045,802.84. We're recommending awarding this package to Advanced Systems Integration in the amount of $1,045,802.84.
You've heard the recommended action, could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Boyd, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Strife Oji, any discussion or questions? Seeing none, this will require a roll call vote, ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Strife Oji?
Aye.
Thompson, aye.
And the motion passes. And one more for Mr. Rozier, operational item E5, action on bid for a multi, multi-building AV and classroom technology package in the amount of $130,410.
Yes, similar to the AV package over at North Campus, we combined this bid because it's pretty small, it's just for the additions over at Otter Lake and South Campus, and pretty much the same type of things, PA systems, TVs, projectors for the new areas. And the total bid for this project, the low bidder came in at $131,410, and that bid was from ECSI System Integrators. There were two, there were two bidders for this project also. So the recommendation is to approve the, the bid to ECSI in the amount of $134,410.
You've heard the recommended action, could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Strife Oji, a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Strife Oji, any discussion or questions? Seeing none, this will require a roll call vote, ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Strife Oji?
Aye.
Thompson, aye.
And the motion passes. And one more for Mr. Rozier, operational item E5, action on bid for a multi, multi-building AV and classroom technology package in the amount of $130,410.
Yes, similar to the AV package over at North Campus, we combined this bid because it's pretty small, it's just for the additions over at Otter Lake and South Campus, and pretty much the same type of things, PA systems, TVs, projectors for the new areas. And the total bid for this project, the low bidder came in at $131,410, and that bid was, was from ECSI System Integrators. There were two, there were two bidders for this project also. So the recommendation is to approve the, the bid to ECSI in the amount of $134,410.
You've heard the recommended action, could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Strife Oji, a second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Newmaster, any question or discussions? Seeing none, this will require a roll call vote.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Strife Oji?
Aye.
Thompson, aye.
And the motion passes, thank you, Mr. Rozier. And we're moving on to our last operational item E6, action on the school board policies, so this is the second reading for these policies. These will be policies number 425, staff development, policy 505, distribution of non-school-sponsored materials on school premises by students and employees, policy 610, student field trips, fees and fines, and policy 616, school district system accountability. Dr. Casmer, check.
Yeah, I, I don't have any.
Oh, I saw your name on here, so I called on you.
So, we don't have questions about the second reading? But I'm happy to take a stab at answering if we have any.
Following the rules here. All right, yes, so please, Dr. Newmaster.
I looked at the staff development one carefully.
Number 425?
Yep, and it was, if you want to know the page, it was on, I think it started on 127 and it went to 130, and I just read through that many times because over my years, we had a lot of staff development plans that were site-based, and this has a lot of the best practices that people have done for many years. And I guess I only had one question, I think it's well-written and, and we talked about all the things that work together with inclusivity and diversity and a lot of good things, peer coaching for new teachers, just a mix. My only question was, as we listed, all the things that are part of the world's best workforce and, we mentioned a lot of things specifically, but we didn't mention the big push on the science of reading and literacy, although we did mention make sure you use technology appropriately, but I think we should, I'm not quite sure why we didn't put in the, the push for science of reading and literacy, because there's lots of things listed in there. And grant you, that's kind of a general curriculum thing, but it's been such a big push for the last two, three years, I just kind of wondered if we were going to include that.
Is that a specific curriculum or a specific training?
Not exactly, it's, it's pretty broad-based over a lot of areas and it was a big push, just like inclusivity and, and I thought, since they mentioned effectively deliver digital and blended learning and curriculum, and engage with technology twice in two different places, I was surprised they never had the science of reading and literacy in there. Yeah, I just missed it, I did read it two, three times.
Yeah, I would say the science of reading is really a professional learning, more so than a curriculum, and so I feel that the policy that we, we have updated does include that, it doesn't call it out because it's so specific, but I feel like it captures the spirit within the, the policy as written, but I think, I think you have a really great point that that is definitely something that's really important to us as we look at professional learning for our teachers.
I just wondered, because, you know, blended learning and whatever was mentioned twice specifically in two different sections, I thought, let's get the literacy and the science of reading, because that's so important for the benchmarks and things like that. So that was just something that I thought, oh, feels like that's missing. That's it, it looks great, but.
Oh, Ms. Babish, do you feel like, as you said, Ms., Dr. Newmaster's concerns are inherent in the policy, or would you recommend that we send it back for another reading?
I feel like they're inherent within the policy.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, usually we approve these in one fell swoop, so I would call for a motion to approve the policies.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Thompson and a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Boyd, any further discussion? And this is a voice vote, so all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, and the motion passes, thank you so much. We are now at the point of our meeting Board Forum, which is an opportunity for board members to share events happening in the district and to, to share any successes that they have encountered or anything that people should be looking forward to from the board, like what should we, what should we know is going on? Anyone want to share? Ms. Strife Oji.
I attended the Lincoln PTO a couple weeks ago and it was just fun to see all of the construction there and, and see them utilizing that space. They do have a, a family day, really, it goes 11 to 8:00 PM on March 24th, LeAnn Chin's, for fundraising for them, so just something to think about, but very fun to see them utilizing that space.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, Dr. Newmaster?
I can give a plug for Otter Lake's big spring event is going to happen in a different format, they're going to, and they have a rain date also, but they're going to have it outside along with the book sale rather than being online, they're going to try food trucks, and of course, they're still discussing their other fundraising things that are totally amazing because that is a school that raises a lot of money for classrooms. So, and I'm trying to remember, I know it'll be in community development, the community backpack, and it'll be out there, but it is going to be much later, it's not in April, it's going to be in May and have a rain date, so. It's not to be missed if you want to see how to do an event like that, because they do it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Boyd.
So the White Bear Lake Area Education Foundation has their 22nd Annual Golf Tournament scheduled now for June 20th at Oak Glen Golf Course in Stillwater. So any information on that you can find on the White Bear Lake Education Foundation website, but there's a, a lot of different ways that you can support the event by donating and by getting together a foursome.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just have two congratulations in order, I want to say congrats to our girls' basketball team, making it to state, I just saw, heard about that this morning, that's really exciting, Go Bears, and then I also wanted to congratulate Matoska kindergarten teacher Kendall Gonzalez, who is a semifinalist for Minnesota Teacher of the Year, which is no small feat, so congratulations to Kendall and have my fingers crossed for her. All right, with that, I would entertain a call to, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moving by Ms. Boyd and a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Strife Oji, all in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, and we are adjourned.